I think we're still waiting on two more.
Michael's here.
Yeah, we're talking to Chris.
I'm Stephanie here.
We're talking to Chris. This is Chris.
Oh, we're looking for Bob.
Bob's not on yet.
Did you guys tour together?
Just, just Chris and myself. And Chris had to recuse himself in the last one, so. There's Bob. Hey, everybody. Hi, Bob. Sorry, I'm late. We had a little. A little activity out front. Had the hook and ladder, three trucks. My neighbor burned some toast. Hey, at least they're on, right?
They are on.
That's what we want. Short response time.
Yes.
Okay, everybody here? Chris, Chris is here.
Hello.
Okay. We'll call the Carmel Planning Commission meeting to order for Wednesday, February 10th. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Here.
All right, Commissioner Dells?
Here.
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Chair Lepage?
Here. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see you. Okay. Under extraordinary business, I'm going to just welcome our new planning director today, Brandon Swanson. He's joining us, and I also want to thank Marnie for picking up the torch and during one of probably the hardest times in the history of Carmel planning and doing a great job, so a big hand for her. Big up, as they say. So, is there any other extraordinary business? Don't hear anybody chiming in. You know, tonight, I was just going to remind her, but if you want to make sure you get heard, you can hit that raise hand sign down there in the bottom menu. That's a good way to make sure you get heard if you're not getting heard. Okay, so. Next item is the public appearances. Are there any members from the public that would like to address the Planning Commission tonight about matters?
I would.
Not on our agenda. You don't have to identify yourself, but it's helpful if you do.
Yes, I will. This is Joe Todd, Carmel. I'm sorry I didn't get to the meeting last month, but I wanted to say kudos for the yoga studio that's starting, that's opening on San Carlos, because I'm on Nishin, and they notified the people on Nishin, which I thought was, they didn't have to do that. That was very nice of them. And that brings me to my main concern here. I talked to Marnie about this, but there's a, there's a. I guess there's no ceiling on a number of wine tasting rooms in the city, and Barbara thought maybe there were 21, so we don't know. But what brought this to my attention is that there is a request of a tasting room on Nishin, which is across the street from the youth library, and they had something up in September, but I just noticed it a couple of months ago. And I just found out that they didn't really have to notice the people at the other end of the street because it was beyond 100 feet. So I was just wondering if you would, if the commission would really check into that, because I'm thinking that there should be no, and I think if there's something coming on the street, they should notify the entire street, I mean, for the tasting rooms, because that's really important. So if you would look into that. And let's see. There's, and the reason I'm concerned about this, too, is because they put a sign up in September, but Marnie said she hasn't heard from them since then. But there's already a tasting room about the third door down from Fifth Street on Nishin already. I just think that that, you know, two on the same block, it's just, it's ridiculous. And then. Let's see. Like, in the number of tasting rooms in the village entirely, I would like to know what that is, but if you could revisit that and, you know, maybe have one of your meetings say something about that. Because right now, there are six restaurants in this area within a block on Nishin, and they all serve alcohol, so I don't think, you know, we need another tasting room on this block. And I think the same would be true for like the real estate businesses. I think that's it. Yeah. My main concern was just the idea that they were requesting a tasting room on Nishin, and there's already one up the street on Nishin between Fifth and Sixth Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Yeah, I would. Recommend that you go on the city website and look at the wine tasting policies. There are restrictions on locations. There are recommendations for areas which we prefer them to be in, and there are restrictions on how many you can have in a particular block. So we have addressed a lot of those issues, and that information is out there. This, it's not our agenda tonight, so we don't want to take the time to discuss it, but thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the Planning Commission on any items which are not on our agenda tonight? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, and I don't see anybody else, so we will move on. To. I already made my announcement about our new planning director. Anybody else have any announcements? Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may request to have an item pulled for consideration, and. For purposes of the. Public and the commission, you can have that pulled for discussion, and unless that is done, a motion may be made to adopt them all in one motion. So we have two items on the agenda tonight. We have our meetings, the planning commission meetings from our January 13th meeting, and we also, item number two is the community planning building monthly permit report. Does, are there any corrections to the minutes? Anybody want to point out? Or comments? Don't see anybody raising their hand. Everybody shaking their head, no? And then we have the community planning building monthly permit report. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that? There's any questions or comments on that?
No, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, items number one and two?
I would make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I can second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to accept both items on the consent agenda. There's no further discussion. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Dells? Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Chair Lepage?
Yes. Can I hit that mute button? Unmute. Okay, okay, the next item on our agenda tonight are the public hearings. Okay, so the first item is design study 20305. It's the southeast corner of Lincoln and Third, is consideration of final designs, study, and associated coastal development permit for demolition of existing duplex and the construction of a new single-family residence located at the southeast corner of Third Avenue in Lincoln and the single-family residential zone. Can we have the staff report, please? Oh, I think.
Michael, I need to.
Commissioner Lehman, yes, Commissioner Lehman needs to recuse herself. Thank you for reminding me, Commissioner Lehman.
I believe I'm recused as well.
Yeah, okay, right, right. So we have. That's right, we're down to commissioners. We still have a. All right. Staff report, please.
Great. Well, good afternoon, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Can you all see the PowerPoint presentation? Okay, so the for you this afternoon is a final design study and associated coastal development permit for OSBT Investments. This is a new project at Lincoln and Third. So it's the demolition of an existing duplex and the construction of a new single-family dwelling. The Planning Commission reviewed the concept of this project at the January 13th meeting and accepted the concept. So some of the draft conditions that were included at the concept hearing addressed tree removal mitigation, which has been made a condition of approval, as well as the city foresters' tree protection measures that are specific to this lot. Also, grading and drainage plan, which has also been incorporated as a condition of approval and will be provided with the construction drawings for a building permit. And then staff had some questions about the plate and ridge heights on the southwest corner of the building, and whether those were within city standards. The architect has provided some additional information demonstrating that both the plate and the ridge heights are below what is permitted. So this afternoon, we're going to just talk a little bit about final details. So the project includes stained cedar siding for the wall cladding finish. It also has stone accents. And. Stone veneer chimney. The trim color for the building would be a darker gray or light black color. And the project would have a zinc standing seam metal roof, which will allow some weathering over time. With regards to lighting, the project includes both a wall sconce and a half light. Staff had drafted condition of approval number 31 regarding the wall sconce exceeding the maximum lumen level allowed. The architect has proposed an alternative light fixture, which you see in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. And there's a couple different styles of this fixture, but there are options that meet our lumen requirements. Staff also raised an issue in the staff report regarding the fencing and whether or not it was appropriate due to the use of two materials, so the stucco and the wood, and sort of the irregular nature of how those two materials interact with each other. So staff had drafted condition of approval number 29, which would have the architect revise the design of the fence. The architect is proposing an alternative design, so if the commission feels that this is not an appropriate design. The, the architect has offered an alternative, which is a primarily horizontal wood fence that would step down with the grade. There is a retaining wall under the fence, and there would be some stucco elements marking the entries to the property. So this is a perspective kind of looking southeast at the front of the house. The front entry is on the, the left side there. And this would be the view along Third Avenue. So now it's, it's one, this, this option is one continuous material. And then this is a perspective from Lincoln Street, which is actually a cul-de-sac in this particular area. And the fence is set back quite far from the right away. So looking for some feedback from the commission this evening on the fence design. And then with regards to landscaping and site coverage, the applicant has provided a preliminary landscape plan, which is required at final details. The plant pallet will be reviewed by the city forester as well as by the water district prior to installation. The city forester will review the plant pallet for compatibility with the forest setting. The water district will also review the landscaping for compliance with our water-efficient landscaping regulations. And with respect to site coverage, the project may be over on site coverage just slightly. There is some gravel included around the garage that's not identified in the site coverage table, so that may need to be replaced with wood chips or, or plant material, and the project has been conditioned accordingly to address that. And with that, staff is recommending that the commission adopt a resolution approving the final design study and associated coastal development permit with conditions. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
I have one. If we go with the mixed fence, which I'm assuming is stucco and wood, I guess that's the first question, and then the second question is on, on the color, particularly of the stucco color.
Maybe, maybe the architect can answer that question.
Hello, this is.
Yeah, Alan, why don't you, yeah, we can hear you. What's, what's the color of that stucco?
So this is Alan Lehman. I'm the designer for the project. The stucco color would be in a tan earth tone range to make that as. Very much as if it was of the earth rather than something, you know, bold and stark, you know, not, not a bright white color or anything like that. Kind of picking up on the, the gold, gold tannish colors of the stone material.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Dells? I guess not. Okay. Commissioner Locke? No questions for staff?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Alan, you want to take up, do your presentation now?
Sure. So a couple of things we, as the project evolved along the way, originally, and on some of the elevations, it still shows a note for a trespass siding, which is a composite material. But I, in more research of these products, I decided to return to what we, we love so much, which is wood, and stain, stain the wood in a gray wash that would give it the, almost the head start of the aged graying of a natural cedar, which the, the siding is, is a natural cedar, although it's a veneer over a plywood backing. Helping with a couple of things, one of which is it, this material is able to carry a wooey fire rating, and this is a high fire severity zone of Carmel, so we want to make sure that, you know, all the materials and the design of the house is, is both compliant and is as fire resistant as possible. The, the fence design, originally shown with that stepping design, staff questioned it and which forced me to, or helped me to reevaluate it, and I think the, the revised, more simplified version is possibly a much better solution, and, and I'd rather move in that direction in order to kind of. Calm the view from that corner, as the fence is so prominent along that long stretch, because, you know, there is the, the corner lot, and so we're seeing a lot of fence along there. The. The other item that was mentioned about the gravel surrounding the house. So one of the issues that I'm finding people are coming up against, and so I built the house last year across the street from this, and after this was built, the insurance companies started to question the bark leading on the, on grade up against the house and requesting something more fire resistant. And so I know we have, for a long time, specified bark in this area, and I think it's something that we're going to hit a wall with, that it's just not possible to do that. And so I don't know if the, the commission would, if it's possible to, or if the commission can accept the, the gravel or some sort of alternative material in those areas at non-coverage element. And I think that's, that's, that's most of it, unless there's any questions for me.
Are there any questions for Alan? Okay, no questions. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
If we have, we have any other questions during discussion, we'll, we'll let you know. Okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the Planning Commission regarding this application? I don't hear anybody chiming in. If somebody comes in later, we can, we can let them make their comments. Okay, so I'm going to close the public comments and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Dells, would you like to begin?
Thanks. This is materially unchanged from a month ago. I think, I think we all quite liked the project a month ago. I know I certainly did. So I think the only thing to comment on is the fence. I would be supportive of either version, and if Mr. Lehman wants to do the mixed, the two uses, I think that's very interesting, and would be, would be additive. I'd actually prefer that one, but would defer to the other two commissioners on that. As to the bark. Do we get direction from staff on that? I, I, I'm a fan of wildfire prevention and putting less flammable things around our homes, but I don't know what leeway we have there.
All right. We, that's, that's a good point, the. Flammable up against a house, it's something we need to have a discussion about probably in the future. But right now, why don't, Commissioner Locke, why don't you make your comments on the design? Maybe we can get some, get a little input from staff about the, the site coverage issue.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Dells. I don't think there, there's really any change. We really appreciated the design last month. I also think that the proposed fence is pretty. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I kind of like the mixed design, as long as it's a lower, you know, low fence that it's pretty. It will require maintenance, obviously, because it's a north-facing stucco area, so probably will be subject to mildew from time to time, and they'll have to paint it, but yeah, no, it's pretty. I think the issue with the bark, I'm supportive of gravel if we can do that. I think we do need to start thinking about these things, and we continue getting, you know, this goes to the same thing we've had before with metal roofs. We have certain design guidelines, and yet we live in an area where we're going to be experiencing more and more problems with the climate change, and we really need to be proactive. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Yeah, this is essentially the same project, and as far as the fence goes, I actually did like the first presentation of the fence. I thought it was, was interesting, had some nice changes in material, and it was still tastefully done. So, but, but I defer to the designer, which way you want to go. As far as the gravel, we, I'm on the climate change committee. We did have a rather good presentation a couple of months ago from, about wildland, wildland fires, and there was a lot of discussion about how residences actually catch fire. One of the things that I learned was that most of the time residents catch fire from embers, not actually from the flames. And a lot of times what happens is the embers get sucked in under the house through the foundation vents because of the pressure change that starts to happen when the fire, you know, creates a, a low, or high pressure outside, or where the pressure differential. But there was quite a bit of discussion about the types of materials up against houses, too, and, and I think we should probably have that material presented to the Planning Commission in a future meeting, so we can have a better discussion about this, because the, the challenge of climate change and the possible impact of a fire on our community, we need to do whatever we can to mitigate those, and that, that is going to require some changes to our residential design guidelines. We've already addressed that by allowing more metal roofs like this project has, and trying to get away from wood roofs, flammable roofs, so. But I think we're going to have to have a larger discussion about that. So would the staff want to have any comments about this, the gravel? And the issues with fire?
Yeah, I, I think. I think Alan raises a good point. As you know, our, our code is very specific on the amount of. Natural soil that can be covered with materials. I certainly do think that we, we do need to evaluate more fire-resistant construction in the future, in the near future. I think for now, maybe one thing I might offer is looking at fire-resistant landscaping. If the, the bark is. You know, if, if, if you're not comfortable with the bark chips because of the flammability, an, an alternative would be to look at using fire, fire-resistant landscaping instead.
Possibly, Marnie, maybe staff could think about agendizing. I can provide the summary sheet that we have for the presentation to the Climate Change Committee, too.
Sure.
There's a lot of, a lot of good information in there, so. So I guess. For the, Alan, staff's offering you some, maybe some opportunity to have more discussion about this at staff level, try to come up with something that, that meets, meets what you're trying to do and. With regards to the.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm open to, you know, making adjustments to that and working with staff on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I think that's all of the Planning Commission's comments. I was going to take a look at the resolution. Staff has, I think I got it here someplace. So the only special conditions are 26, preconstruction meeting, 27, driveway permeable paper, So the only special conditions are 26 pre-construction meaning, uh, 27, uh, driveway permeable paper, 28, uh, reduction in site coverage. I'm gonna work with staff. We had some discussion about that. 29 is the, uh, the fence. Uh, it sounds like, um, commissioners are, uh, open to just leaving it up to the applicant, what he wants to do there. Both, both of his, uh, present, uh, what he's presenting or proposing look, look, are, I think, supported by, uh, the commission. And then 30 was the fencing plan showing the height, location, style. I think that's more to do, uh, it's kind of in conjunction with 29. Uh, 31 is the wall mounted light fixtures. I think the applicant's already presented an alternative. And 32 is, uh, tree removal mitigation, it's pretty standard. And then we have the protection measures, the tree. So, um, do we have a motion to accept the, uh, resolution as presented by staff? Or do we want to have a motion that makes some, uh, additional special conditions or change some of the special conditions?
No, I'd like to move that we, um, go ahead and adopt the resolution, attach in our packet approving the final design study and associated coastal development permit for DS 20 dash 305. And this is for a single-family residence located at the southeast corner of Third and Lincoln. And all of the conditions and special conditions attached to that resolution.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the, uh, resolution as per staff with the standard and special conditions. Is there any further discussion? Don't hear any. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Dells?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Carol Page?
Yes. The motion passes. Good luck with your project, Alan. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on the public hearings tonight is design study 20320. It's located, uh, on the, it's, uh, 5 Southeast, on San Antonio from 8th. And it's consideration of final design study and associated coastal development permit for the demolition of existing single-family residence and the construction of new single-family residence located in the R1 zoning district. Can we have staff report, please?
Okay, so this is the, uh, second final design study, uh, before the commission this afternoon. Uh, you also evaluated this project in January, uh, for the concept design, um, and accepted the project. So this is an existing, uh, single-family dwelling on San Antonio, southeast of 8th. It's a single level with a tuck-under garage. And the architect is, uh, proposing to demolish the existing building and construct a new single-family dwelling with a second story, um, in the, in the, the rear corner, um, of the new residence. The tuck-under parking, uh, would be retained and the building is largely kind of in the same footprint, um, as it exists today. So a couple items that we had discussed at the concept hearing, um, are protecting significant trees. This is a standard, uh, condition. The only tree, um, near the project site is a cypress in the public right-of-way. Um, and that's the green circle with the arrow pointing to it. So, uh, we just wanna make sure that that tree is fully protected, uh, through construction. And the project has been, uh, conditioned accordingly. So one and two go together, both, um, tree protection zones as well for, for that significant cypress. Uh, number three, opaque windows. We talked about the windows, um, at the rear of the, the new residence on the upper floor. The neighbors to the east had some privacy concerns, um, because they have a deck, um, off the, the rear of their house. The project was conditioned to look at different levels of, um, how to make the windows opaque. The architect is proposing two-thirds of the windows be opaque, um, with the remaining clear glass. And then number four, oh, uh, was an item carried over from the concept design study. Uh, the design guidelines discourage the use of turf block. Uh, so, uh, conditions of approval require that an alternative material be selected, uh, prior to issuance of the building permit. Um, and also that the driveway material be extended, um, into the right-of-way to connect with the street edge. We also talked about the size of the chimney. The architect did correct, um, the size to meet the zoning requirements. So that is, uh, not an issue. Uh, and then staff just wanted to, uh, mention the wall in the right-of-way, uh, which is represented by a red dashed line. Um, this wall is not proposed to be removed, um, but should things change during construction and this wall is removed, staff is requiring that it be reconstructed, um, on the private property instead of in this, in the public right-of-way. So that covers the, uh, draft conditions that we discussed at the concept design study. Um, and now we'll talk a little bit about the final details for the project. So this home would be finished completely in stone. It would have a barrel tile roof, copper gutters and downspouts and painted wood windows. Um, all the materials are consistent with the residential design guidelines. The one issue that often comes up with stone is the, the noise during construction from cutting. Uh, the architect did clarify that, uh, the bulk of the cutting will be done off-site and they will only be doing some, some finishing cuts of the stones on the property. And, uh, we also do have a preliminary landscape plan. Uh, you can see that in the, the rear yard. It's very, very natural. Again, the plant material will be reviewed by both the city forester for compatibility with the forest character, um, as well as the water district for water efficient landscaping. Um, and these will be done before issuance of building permits, uh, for the project. And I, sorry, I'm gonna go back a little bit. Um, between the concept and final design study, uh, the north neighbor, uh, which would be, um, towards the top of the, the, the screen, uh, did reach out to staff with some concerns about privacy from the second floor windows of the addition. Staff did visit their home. Um, their master bedroom is within probably three or four feet of the property line. Uh, and the, the story poles and netting were clearly visible. There is some existing landscaping that does provide, uh, a certain level of privacy. Um, and certainly if that landscaping is maintained, um, the, the north neighbor would be much appreciative of that. Uh, staff has made a suggestion that the architect consider, um, either removing the windows on the upper floor or using opaque glass just to ensure privacy long-term. Um, these windows are relatively small and secondary, um, to the larger windows, which are on the west-facing elevation. So a condition of approval has been drafted, uh, which provides, um, those options. And that is the, uh, revision to condition of approval number 33. Uh, and with that, staff's recommendation is that the commission adopt the revised resolution approving the project. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff commissioners? I think, I think, uh, commission doesn't have any questions at this time. Marnie, thank you for your presentation. Is the applicant here to make a presentation tonight to the commission?
Hi, this is Craig Holden, representing the Sohies. Good evening commissioners. How are you? Thank you, Marnie, for the presentation. Let me miss, make sure you guys are all hearing me, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Um, with the technology, I always get concerned that I somehow messed it up. So, uh, we appreciate, uh, what, what staff has done here and we agree with all of it. The issue that I'd love to address would be the, um, the windows in the upstairs on that north side. Uh, we do have, we're currently showing three windows there. Two are, uh, in the bedroom and one is in, uh, the master closet. And, um, I would very much like to argue the possibility of keeping the two windows in the master bedroom in the sleeping area. Uh, right now, our light really comes from the west and I'm a big fan of having balanced light in, in spaces where you can. It just makes for a less glary and more proposing and, and enjoyable, uh, context in which you spend your time. Losing the window in the, um, in the, in the closet would certainly be something we'd, we'd be more amenable to. And if you look a little bit at the site plan, you sort of get a, a sense of that neighbor's house. And our house is pushed forward relative to that close corner, so they're pretty offset. In fact, we pulled our house farther forward, so they should actually get a little bit more southern light in terms of the direct overview of the rear portion of our lot than they used to. And, and there's two, um, uh, bedroom windows that I'm hoping to keep are, are pushed farther forward still. So away from that, that one area, that shared corner, where you've got the, the two corners kind of impacting one another across the property line. So, um, as far as that goes, that would be our preferred solution would be to, um, look at, uh, removing the window in the closet but maintaining the, uh, the two windows in the, in the bedroom proper. Let's see, I think we, we, we gave you our color and materials board and Marty kinda went through that briefly. Um, are there any particular questions that, uh, you'd like to address?
Yes, um, Craig, it's Gail. I, uh, Commissioner Lehman, I would like to know what the sill height is on those windows that are being questioned, including the one in the, in the closet.
That's a good question. Hold on a second. Those, uh, those windows, so the, the, the head is at 6'2". And, uh, hold on just a minute, I'm going through my drawing set while we, while we speak. 24, 25. So the, 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 the bottom of those windows would be about 2'8", 2'6", 2'10", 2'10" off the floor. We have a, we have a six-foot-two, uh, plate height upstairs. They have a low plate height. So it's, it's about, you know, eight inches below the top of the plate. So, um, is, is, is the head of the window and therefore the, the sill would be about, just about, just about three feet, just under three feet high.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I'm wondering if, um, if you could, I, I don't like to lose any windows in any house. And, um, I think, um, they're great for cross ventilation. Uh, we sleep with windows open, so we really, um, you know, it's, I think it's really important. And that window in the closet is great if you wanna open it once in a while and air out your clothes. It's really wonderful. So I'd hate to have you lose any windows. And I noticed that last time you discussed, um, doing a partial opaque for privacy for the neighbors. And I, I ordinarily don't like that. But you don't have enough room to, um, you don't have enough height because of the lower plate height to just move them up and give it kind of a clear story so you can still get light and ventilation.
Well, that, that's, that's a great point. We did change those two windows, 27 and 28, which look over the rear, uh, yard to the lower two-thirds are, are, uh, occluded glass. So yeah, we could do the same thing for those three windows along that. And, um, so I, I, again, there's a, there's a big tree out there. There's a, I don't know if it's a pittusporum, I can't recollect, but it's a big bushy tree. So it's not like we have a whole lot of view there other than into the foliage. So, yeah, I mean, if that were amenable to the commission, we'd certainly be, um, yeah, open to that.
Well, I would, I would certainly support that because I, as I said, I don't like to lose any windows.
Yeah, well, we, we would certainly not want to lose the light and, and keeping the one in the, in the closet would certainly be desirable as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for, uh, the architect, Mr. Holden?
I have a question.
Chris, Mr. Bolton?
Craig, is there any more discussion about the driveway that you can provide to us?
Yeah, I, you know, it was supposed to be just called turf. We, we, we negated to get rid of the block part. I mean, we're still going to keep the two dry strips and, and then lose the, the actual block in the center portion there.
And you'll have a required asphalt apron where it needs to be?
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll bring it out into the apron.
Understood. Thank you for clarification.
Are there any other questions for the applicant from commissioners? I don't see anybody's hand raised. You, you're, you still have your hand raised, Gail? Do you have another question?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
All right, are there, uh, any, any members from the public that would like to make comments to the planning commission regarding this application? I don't hear or see anybody trying to speak, so we will close the public comments and open it up to the commissioners for their comments. Uh, Commissioner Lehman, would you like to start?
Well, I, you know, I think, sure, I'm happy to start. I think, uh, Craig, you've done a really nice job with this. It's a great improvement over a house that looks like it's, it's been in sort of a, a neglectful stage. And I, um, I'm all in favor of it. And I'm, I'm, thank you for your flexibility with the window, you know, with the opaque, even though that's not my, I'm not a fan of that, but, um, I think you're, you're in a situation where you need to do that. So, um, yeah, I'm real happy with the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Uh, Mr. Bolton, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, sure, no problem. Craig, it's for the project in general. I think it's a good project. I think, um, that the windows, uh, should be opaque probably. It's a pretty clear indication of a situation where there's some potential for looking, uh, next door to your neighbors and into their property. So I think having them opaque or partially opaque would be very helpful. I don't wanna see them removed because I like the light and the possibility of the airflow as well. And then I think otherwise, I agree with staff in their, uh, assessment of the project. I don't really have anything further to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Uh, Commissioner Dells, would you like to make some comments?
I have nothing to add. Um, I agree with the previous two commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Dells. Uh, Commissioner Locke?
Same thing. I agree with the previous commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. I, I have one question for staff to, and I apologize if I didn't catch this right. But during your presentation, I think you added a, a special condition regarding the windows. And I don't, I'm not sure what, how that was worded. Could you, uh, confirm or repeat that, Marnie?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the additional condition would be condition number 33 regarding the north elevation windows. Um, and it was drafted as prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall remove the second-story north elevation windows to protect the privacy of the north neighbor or shall install opaque glass.
Okay, thank you. That covers it. All right. Okay, uh, we have a resolution, which, oh, Commissioner Lehman, do you have a comment?
I do. Um, I actually have a question for Marnie. When you specified opaque glass, um, I believe that, um, the architect had said that we would like to do, um, half or two, or two-thirds, um, opaque and, and have it clear above that. So I've, I'm wondering if, um, if you're hard and fast on that, Marnie.
So certainly as part of your motion, So certainly, as part of your motion, we can revise condition 33. And what I'm hearing is we can even eliminate the portion about removing the north windows and just require that they have two-thirds opaque glass.
Okay, thank you. So I would make a motion, if you want one.
Sure. Unless you want to review the, you want to review the special conditions?
Yes, that's what I was.
Again, I can, I can, so basically, we're, the special conditions, 27, tree protection zones, 28, existing right-of-way wall, that was stated, if it is required to be removed, then it needs to be put onto the property, 28, pre-construction meeting, 29, the driveway about the turf block, applicant clarified that, 31, stone facade, all stones pre-cut off-site, 2, fencing, and then 33, you can handle that in your, in your motion, if you'd like.
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion for approval of DS, excuse me, sorry, back to this. DS 20-320, San Antonio, 5 southeast of 8th, APN 010269009. The owner is Saleh. And I would like to note that the addition of special condition number 33 should be that the north windows upstairs should be two-thirds opaque glass and one-third clear glass on the top portion of the window.
Okay, and just for some clarification, we should probably refer to these, the resolution as per the number for the future. So this is resolution number 2021 XX, planning commission.
Okay.
All right, okay, so.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the resolution as per staff with the change to condition number 33, that the windows will be two-thirds opaque. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Dells?
Yes.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Okay, the next item on the public hearing tonight is Design Study 20312. It's located at Communal Real. It is the sixth house northeast of Fourth Avenue. It's consideration of a combined concept and final design study and associated coastal development permit for a 306-square-foot addition. It's going to be net 220 square feet to the rear and front of an existing single-family residence located in the beach overlay, architectural, archaeological significance overlay, and the single-family R1 zone. Let me have staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair LaPage and planning commission.
Before we begin, is, I believe Commissioner Dells needs to recuse himself?
Yeah, it's just a few doors down from me. I'm sure I do.
Okay, Commissioner Dells will recuse himself?
Go ahead.
Okay, let's see. So let's see, just wanted to make sure, can the commission see my PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, I can. I think we all can.
Excellent. Okay, so the, again, the property is an irregular 3,690 square-foot lot. It is developed with a two-story, 1,562 square-foot residence and lower-floor garage. The wall cladding is concrete on the ground floor and horizontal beveled siding on the upper floor, and it has a flat roof, currently clad with tar and gravel. The applicant is proposing a 306-square-foot addition, or, well, total, the total additions equal 306 square feet, so that consists of a 265-square-foot rear addition and a 41-square-foot addition at the front porch. Windows will also be rearranged on all four elevations. Additionally, the applicant is proposing 512 square feet of total site coverage in which half is permeable in compliance with the municipal code's requirements. Let's see, and then in regard to the basement floor area, according to the municipal code, each site is allowed 100 square feet of floor area located in a basement, which is exempt from the floor area limit. The, while the new construction consists of a rear addition and a small addition at the front entry, the applicant is proposing to utilize the existing 340-square-foot garage to garner the bonus basement floor area, and which would allow him to exceed the allowed floor area by 78 square feet. Since the property's retaining walls and stairway retain the grade in front of the garage on both sides, all but the front west face is located entirely below the grade. Therefore, the project qualifies for the bonus basement floor area, and that offsets the proposed additions. In regard to forest character, there's one non-significant potocrapus tree located at the rear of the property. The municipal code requires that new construction be at least six feet back from existing trees. And while the rear retaining wall will be reconfigured and shifted closer to the base of the tree, a six-foot setback will be maintained. In addition, the city forester is recommending planting one upper canopy tree and one lower canopy tree, and that is reflected in condition of approval number 29. While, let's see, with the application of this condition of approval, the project meets the objectives of forest character. In regard to an evaluation of privacy impact, residential design guideline 5.1 requires that the designs organize functions on a site to preserve reasonable privacy for adjacent properties. So the south side neighboring residence is a single-story, and it's located only three feet from the property line. It has two windows and a third high window on the northeast corner facing the new addition at the back. The proposed south-facing glass doors at the project's master bedroom and a glass door at the hallway appear to overlap with the south neighbor's windows, but staff does not anticipate a privacy impact because it's located 14 feet back from the south property line. And as of the writing of this report, staff has not received any concerns from the south neighbor. Window changes are also proposed in the middle of the residence, where the setback ranges from three to five feet. One of the south neighbor's windows may overlap with one of the three new south-facing windows in the middle. So staff has drafted condition of approval number 30, requiring the applicant to plant one or two additional shrubs in order to create additional privacy on the south elevation, maybe just right at that window. However, staff does not recommend a full hedge because it's a very narrow side yard, and a full hedge might obstruct light to windows. Let's see, in regard to the north neighboring residence, it's a two-story residence with a small upper floor window and a rear-facing vertical window. While the addition will be located three feet from the north property line, the north neighbor's residence is about seven feet back from the property line, and their upper floor windows are offset from the first four windows of the proposed addition. And it's concealed by a tall wood fence on top of the retaining wall. So staff does not anticipate a privacy impact, and staff has not received any comments from the north neighbor. The rear east neighbor has a first and second story, has first and second story windows with west-facing and likely ocean views over the top of the project site. The Carmel Municipal Code states that design should respect views enjoyed by neighboring parcels. The applicant is proposing a one-foot height increase from 17 feet to 18 feet. Staff has not received any comments from the rear east neighbor and does not anticipate any view impacts from the one-foot height increase. Additionally, staff does not anticipate a privacy impact. There's a, the windows are offsets, and there's a 19-foot setback between the two properties. Let's see. In regard to, let's see, the rear, or the existing side yard setbacks, the remodel is proposing to maintain the existing non-conforming composite setback of six feet 10 inches at the main residence. However, both new additions are being constructed to comply with the required composite setback of nine feet 2 inches on this lot, which has, it has an irregular composite setback, because it's an irregular, it has an irregular width. The composite setback of the front addition is nine foot 3 inches, and the composite setback at the rear addition is 14 feet 1 inches. So both additions comply with this requirement. On the main residence, the north and south walls may be kept in there at the existing non-conforming setback, because more than 50% of the walls are being maintained, and only small areas are being demolished to change the window locations. According to comments from the building departments, in order to construct those new window openings, the entire wall and all new windows must be made of and installed with 1-hour fire-rated material. So staff spoke with the architect, Adam Jesselnick, who confirmed that 1-hour fire-rated materials would be utilized among the north wall, and that no exterior modifications to the elevation or the setback would be needed to meet this requirement. And so staff finds the proposed alterations to the non-conforming north wall to be compliant with the requirements of the municipal code. In regard to mass and bulk in building in roof form, the municipal code advises minimizing the mass of a building seen from the public way or adjacent properties, and avoiding placing a tall building wall near property line. The residential design guideline 8.1 through 8.5 state that building forms should be simple, and roof forms should be composed of just a few simple frames. The proposed addition will be 11 feet 8 inches in heights and located at the rear of the property, where it will not be visible from the street. While 80, about 80% of the residence is located on the upper level, the rear portion is single-story due to a much, the much higher grade at the rear of the lot. And in staff's opinion, the heights are modest, since the second-story plate height would be just 16 feet 8 inches, while the maximum is 18 feet. Maintains a large setback from the south residence. So in staff's opinion, the proposed addition meets the objectives of the building in roof form. Let's see. In regard to finished details, design guideline 9.5 encourages the use of natural materials that are compatible with the village and a forest context, such as wood or stucco. The addition will have horizontal painted cedar V groove siding, and a, about a foot and a half of stucco siding at the foundation, which largely matches the existing siding. New windows are proposed to be aluminum clad wood in a gray-green color displayed on the slide. The wood railing at the front porch will be replaced with metal cable railing. The rear retaining wall will be modified and installed with a new limestone veneer, which is also shown before you. Let's see, the roof is flat, and it's not visible from the right-of-way. And so the existing tar and gravel roof is proposed to be replaced with a TPO membrane in the rock brown color. The applicant is also proposing a new wood folding garage door, which matches the residence's painter, painted cedar siding. So staff supports the proposed finished materials. In regard to the driveway, the, according to the municipal code, the maximum width of any driveway shall not exceed 14 feet, as measured at the front property line, or any point between the front property line and its connection with the street. However, the design guidelines offer a more restrictive standard, and they require that the amount of cave surface area of a driveway should be limited to nine feet. The existing 14-foot-wide asphalt driveway is proposed to be replaced with a new 14-foot-wide gray aggregate permeable concrete driveway. A 14-foot-wide driveway is typically only permitted for a two-car garage, while single-car garages are allowed up to 12 feet typically, a 12-foot-wide driveway. The property's driveway appears fairly wide, in staff's opinion, in relation to the single-car garage to which it connects. So staff has drafted condition of approval number 31, requiring that the applicant reduce the driveway width to 12 feet by incorporating one or two-foot-wide planting strips on either side of the driveway in order to reduce the wide paving area and soften the tall appearance of the retaining walls. And the applicant is asking to, if he is required to do that, to reallocate that site coverage to the rear patio, which would be fine, that complies with the requirements, and it doesn't change the site coverage amount, and it would allocate paving from the front, visible from the street, to the backyard. Let's see, and then, in regard to the material of the driveway, residential design guideline 10.5 states that for driveways, patios, and walkways, to select paving materials that convey the color and textures of native materials that will reduce runoff, the use of Carmel stone, bricks, decomposed granite, and earth tone pavers are appropriate, and avoid using turf block and gray concrete. So since the residential design guidelines discourage gray concrete and recommend a sand set, a sand set paver driveway, to achieve a permeable surface, staff recommends that the applicant create a permeable paver driveway designed to allow water to permeate the soil. The stormwater compliance coordinator, Anya Smartalay, did review this project, but she did not specifically require a permeable paver driveway. So staff can support either a standard sand set driveway or a specifically, like a permeable paver driveway, which would complement, in staff's opinion, the forest character of the block better than a gray concrete permeable driveway. So that is reflected in condition of approval number 32. In regard to the retaining walls, there's a, the main retaining wall is at the north side of the property at the front, and it does encroach into the right-of-way. It's adjoining the north neighbor's existing wall. But since, essentially, the submittal of a design study triggers the staff's review of any existing encroachments. And so, the owner of the, staff has included condition of approval number 33, reflecting the requirement that the owner submitted encroachment permit to maintain that wall in the right-of-way. In regard to the lighting, the applicant is proposing to install six LED outdoor 298-mum wall lights, consisting of three in the front yard and three in the rear yard. The proposed light fixture is shielded and down-facing, and in staff's opinion, complies with the requirements of the municipal code, and no landscape lighting is proposed. So this, in staff's opinion, complies. And so, staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the combined concept and final design study and associated coastal development permit for additions to the existing residence. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Lehman, you have your hand up? Did you have a question? I guess you don't have a question. Any other commission, questions from Commissioners for staff? I don't hear any.
I have a question for us.
Oh, there we go, Commissioner Bolton.
My hand is up, Chair.
It was up. Thank you.
Quick question. Regarding the north wall, I understand that it's a non-conforming condition that's allowed to be maintained because less than 50% of the wall is being proposed to be reconstructed. But then I heard that the entire wall is being reconstructed in order to make it a 1-hour firewall. So why is it not being required to come into compliance?
I'm assuming if they want it's interior, and not the entire wall.
Okay, so because the ability requirement is such that it does not require the actual demolition of the entirety of the wall, and the 1-hour can be achieved by an interior remodel of that wall, it does not require a change to the plans to become compliant with the setback?
I believe it's, as long as they're leaving the exterior portion of the wall. I think the demolition definition is the exterior, the removal of the cladding and the structural framing. So I believe they're keeping the structural framing in place, but they would be essentially sheet rocking, is my understanding. And then they would need to find window openings that meet that, that 1-hour fire-rated standard.
Sure. Perfect. Thank you very much. That answers my question.
Okay, any other questions for staff? I don't see anybody's hand up, so. Thank you, Catherine. Okay, I see Adam Jesselnick. Okay, I see, um, Adam Jesselnick, the architect for this project, is there. So would you like to make a presentation to the planning commission, Adam?
Yes, please. Thank you, Chair LaPage, hello commissioners. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, good.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, thanks for taking the time to review this project today. I've been, I've been working on this particular site for a little while now, actually. I was working with the previous owner who, um, had gone through the preliminary site assessment process as well as the historic analysis for this, for this house. Uh, it was found to be, uh, or, or deemed not historic, um, although it retains, uh, quite a bit of its original character from when it was built in nineteen sixty. And, uh, so in working with the new owner, you know, we essentially wanted to retain as much of the building footprint as we could, um, but then to extend the house on one level, uh, just to make it a more, a more usable, uh, modern home. So, you know, as you were able to see onsite today, um, basically took advantage of, of the area at the rear of the lot, you know, it, it is an irregular shaped lot. Uh, we were fairly constrained in terms of, of what we could add in terms of square footage. Uh, but basically by adding on to, uh, to the north side of the, of the house, north and east, uh, we were able to create, uh, you know, a patio area in the rear yard, uh, facing south, which I think, you know, works well and maintains privacy, some degree of privacy for, for my clients for that outdoor space. And then, uh, basically, uh, like Catherine was just describing, we are able to retain a good portion of the exterior structural walls around the house with the exception of a few door and window openings. And so, um, but in order to, uh, to create the new floor plan, we are, uh, eliminating quite a few of the interior walls. And so, uh, it became clear to me that we'll, we'll need a new roof on this house and that as long as we're building a new roof, um, we'll take advantage of, of that to be able to just create a little bit more ceiling height inside the house. We also talked about onsite this afternoon, the clients are, are a little taller, so that extra one foot of interior height will make quite a difference for them. So, you know, the style of the home will be architecturally very consistent with, with what's there, maintaining the flat roof, the horizontal siding, the, uh, you know, the, the fenestration. So all of those details, I think, are really in keeping with, with the original character of the house, but bringing it up to date. And, uh, the last note, just on that fire rating question. Uh, so yes, to create the one hour firewall, uh, there's a number of different things we can do, but most likely we'll, we'll be retaining the existing framing and we'll be adding sheet rock to the in, inside face of the wall to create that one hour fire rating and then, and then the appropriate details for the roof eve and the window openings. And with that, that's, uh, that's all I have. Uh, and if you have any questions about the project, I'd be happy to answer them.
I see that Commissioner Bolton has his hands up.
Yes, I do, thank you. Quick questions. Uh, number one, staff identified a potential conflict view issue with one of the windows maybe overlapping. I'm sorry, there's a lot of noise on somebody's mic. Thank you. Um, I was saying, there seems to be a potential view overlap between one of the windows on your south elevation with one of the north elevation windows on the adjacent property. Is there any consideration given to potentially making that window obscure? I'm uncertain what's behind that window, what's in that room in an effort to try and not plant something in that side yard, which would of course reduce the overall light to that both properties. Just a quick question on that first. And then the second question is regarding the roofing material. I understand you've proposed a membrane roof on the flat roof. Uh, I have some concern regarding the property to the east and down upon that roof and there being some kind of issue with reflectivity and just a large bright roof. And I wondered if there was any consideration getting to a ballast roof. And I understand also that they do, they do make ones that you can use with membrane roofs as well, and it helps diffuse some of the potential light impacts. Anyway, those are my questions, I'll listen to them off mic, thank you.
Thank you, uh, so, uh, so I'll just take those questions one at a time. In terms of the windows on the south elevation, uh, those are, uh, two small windows in a bedroom for, again, for light and for, for natural ventilation, as well as a small window in the bathroom for light and natural ventilation. Um, there will be shades on all of those windows. Uh, I believe the sills are also, um, are quite a bit, you know, are not the standard, uh, height. So in terms of, of privacy and view impact, I think it's, it's fairly minimal. Um, we certainly don't object to incorporating some planting, uh, per Catherine's special conditions. And in regards to the roof, this was something that, uh, came up specifically in response to a question from Catherine. Uh, I think the final, uh, specification for the roof will be provided, uh, for the building permit plans. But basically, uh, we did, I did look at the reflectivity of, uh, the options available from this manufacturer, uh, and this, uh, seemed to be the, the least reflective as well as the most, um, consistent with the other design elements and consistent with the forest character. So, um, I know that staff and, and the commission has been very concerned in the past about brighter roofs, you know, tan or white. So I wanted to stay away from, from those colors and this color seemed to be a, a nice, a nice blend and, um, you know, oftentimes the roof goes down and it does maintain some type of kind of shininess, but very quickly, uh, it weathers and, and, and tends to just blend in.
Okay, are there any other questions for, uh, the applicant? I don't see any, okay, thank you, Adam. Um, is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment to the planning commission regarding this application? I don't hear anybody, so I will close the public comments, open it up to the commission for their comments. Commissioner Locke, would you like to begin?
Sure. Um, first of all, I want to, um, thank Catherine for the presentation and, uh, the drafting of the special conditions, uh, for this project. I think they're spot on. Um, I, I think that the, uh, width of the driveway and the type of the driveway definitely needs to, um, be different than that proposed. Um, the more we see of the permeable surfaces without having just a dark gray concrete, um, I think it's great. So I'm really supportive of the special conditions. I think that this project is fine as, as proposed with the special conditions. Um, I can understand, uh, Commissioner Bolton's questions about the material on the roof, um, and I do hope that it's not, um, at all reflective, and I'm sure it will weather, um, but, uh, I, I really don't have anything else except that I, I'm very supportive of the special conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Uh, Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I think, uh, some of my commentary was directed at the architect already, and I, I don't, um, have a direct objection to the roof material. I just wanted to know about what materials were explored and what the options are. Um, obviously going from a tar and gravel roof to a solid surface material is going to change the, uh, the look of the roof, period. Um, and so I was just asking whether or not there would be some way to maintain more of a look by employing a ballast roof. But I understand, um, the considerations and the difficulty of employing roofs in these times with our fire issues. I support the staff's, uh, special conditions. I think Catherine did an excellent job on this project, and, uh, I can support this project given those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton. Uh, Commissioner Lehman, would you like to make some comments?
Is Gail muted for anybody else?
Yes, she is, she's muted.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, but I agree with, um, the comments that Commissioner Locke and Commissioner Bolton have made. I think Catherine has done an excellent job with the special conditions, um, as well. And, um, I'm, I'm glad that, that you know about the, the look of the driveway. Um, and I'm, um, I, I think redoing this house will be a great asset to the neighbors and the neighborhood. So, um, it, uh, I was over there today. I had actually done one, two doors up from that quite a few years ago. And, um, you know, it, uh, a lot of these houses have been neglected for a long time and it's wonderful to see them, um, reconstituted, so to speak. So thank you, Adam, I think it's a good job. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lehman. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of staff's findings on this project in the comments of my fellow commissioners, and, um, I echo Commissioner Lehman's sentiment that it's nice to see a house being remodeled and, uh, fixed up rather than torn down. So, um, having said that, the, uh, resolution as per staff, uh, the special conditions are, um, number twenty-eight is erosion control in the right of way, twenty-nine forest department, uh, tree planting, thirty, uh, additional vegetation for privacy, thirty-one, the reduced driveway width, uh, thirty-two, the, uh, driveway paver material, and thirty-three is the encroachment permit required. So do we have a motion to accept the resolution as per staff?
Commissioner LaPage?
Yes.
I noticed that, um, uh, Brandon has raised his hand.
Oh.
Thank you, yeah, Commissioner Page, if I could, that's okay, I did it very last minute. Um, uh, you know, I'm the new guy here, but I just, I just wanted to ask maybe the commission, um, if, if they'd be interested in, and, you know, Commissioner Bolton's comments were the good ones about the perhaps ballast look, if they wanted to perhaps give leave to staff to work with the applicant, um, and give an option, you know, we can, we can perhaps get a sample of the roof material and determine how, how shiny or not shiny it might be. And if there's an option, if, if it doesn't turn out as we think it might, because we haven't seen a sample of it, perhaps it'd also have an option of, of making it a ballast roof. Um, I wasn't sure if the commission would be interested in an option like that, uh, for, uh, at the staff level, of course.
I'd be interested.
I like it.
All right, we can, uh, include that as a special condition. Were you, were you about to make a motion, Commissioner Lehman?
Um, I, I, I can, um, but, um...
I mean, if, I'm not, I'm not trying to, uh, push you into it, I just, I thought I heard you say that.
But I just, I would like to, um, uh, address the architect again and see what his feelings are, um, about the ballast roof.
Adam?
Sure, I mean, to be honest, uh, I think that it's, it's worthwhile always, you know, investigating other, other material choices. So for, for the roof, we'd be happy to obtain and provide staff with samples of, of at least, um, you know, one or two different options. And, and I think we can work with Catherine and the, and the building official directly on that to, uh, obtain a sample, obtain a roof material that will be, that will be acceptable.
Okay. So Commissioner, I, I mean Chair LaPage, would you like a?
Yeah, if you want to, you want to continue, I'll, I'll let you continue, Commissioner Lehman, uh, making a proposal, bringing a resolution.
Yeah, I, um, I was going to make the motion and include the resolution.
Yes.
Okay, um, so I move for approval on DS twenty dash three one two, Commune Real Six Northeast of Fourth, um, the, um, APN zero one zero two three two zero two four, um, the owner's names are Collins, um, and Adam Jesselnick, it's the architect who is, uh, representing them. Um, I, um, would like to move for approval along with, um, the special conditions, which I'm getting to. Special conditions, um, number twenty-eight, the erosion control, twenty-nine, the forestry, tree planting requirement, thirty, the additional vegetation, thirty-one to reduce the driveway width, um, thirty-two, a paver driveway material, um, and thirty-three, the encroachment permit required. And I, and then an addition of, um, of thirty-four, which would be, um, working with, um, Catherine and, uh, perhaps, um, uh, the new building official, uh, I'm sorry, head of planning, Brandon, and, um, uh, to discuss the possibility, look into the possibility of an alternative for the roof, um, without, um, obligation to change to the alternative. I hope that doesn't confuse you too much.
Yeah, I think this, I think the applicant just needs to provide a sample to staff to determine its reflectivity and then, uh, explore the option of a, uh, a built up roof.
Yes.
Ballast roof.
Right.
Okay, do we have a second?
I can second that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to accept the resolution as per staff with all the conditions and the additional, special condition that the applicant provide a sample of the proposed roof material and also discuss, explore the option of a ballast roof with staff, at staff level. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Bolton?
Yes.
Commissioner Lehman?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion passes. Uh, thank you, good luck with your project.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you all.
Chair, may I make a question or make a comment, rather, to staff?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, in our last meeting, we met on a house that was proposing a similar roof that was going to be one of these TPU or, or membrane roofs. And the contractor on site to discuss this mentioned the fact that they, it is a possibility or there are existing roof solutions that include the TPU roof and ballast. So that might be something to look at when you discuss this next project. So in other words, it doesn't necessarily have to be a true built up roof, the old style, which are of course very difficult and expensive potentially, and there are reasons not to employ those roofs. But maybe it's more of a hybrid kind of roof where you get some of the look and some of the dissipation of the light by having a gravel or a material on the actual membrane roof. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Okay, yes, uh, yeah, the applicants can provide, uh, specifications for different types of roofs that address those specific issues to staff. But thank you for those comments, Commissioner Bolton. Okay, so I see Commissioner Dals is back, and the next item on the public hearings tonight is Design Study two zero three two three. This is the northeast corner of San Antonio and Ocean. It's consideration of a combined concept and final design study and associated coastal development permit for alterations to an existing single family residence located in the single family residential, uh, zone and the, uh, architectural significant overlay district and the park overlay district and the beach and riparian overlay district. And it's under coastal commission appeal jurisdiction. So can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Chair, members of the planning commission. So the project before you this afternoon is a combined concept and final design study for a single family dwelling that has been in a state of partial construction for quite some time now. Back in two thousand and fifteen, uh, the planning commission approved a design study, uh, for, uh, a remodel and exterior modifications to, um, this particular dwelling. The house is located on an eight thousand, uh, square foot lot, has a two car detached garage, uh, located within the front setback. Um, so that design study was approved. Uh, the photos that you're looking at now are what, what the home looked like prior to construction. And some of the most notable changes that occurred in two thousand and fifteen were removing an upper floor second story bedroom at the northeast corner of the residence, also converting an existing guest cottage, um, into a Ramada, and then converting, um, a significant amount of lower level basement storage space into living space. So, building permit was issued for this project, project went under construction, um, and then... in April of 2019 was the last building inspection. And since then, both the building permit and the design study have expired. The property also is under new ownership now. And the new owner would like to get a new design study. Primarily, we're sort of reissuing the design study that was expired, but with modifications. So, that is what is before you this afternoon. Here's some photos of what the project looked like in 2017 while it was under construction. It's a little bit further along than what you see in these pictures, but still quite unfinished. So, the current project applicant is Adam Jesselnick. And he is proposing some modifications to the prior design study. Some of the more notable changes are replacing the gable roof on the detached garage with a flat roof that would also be a green roof. He's also proposing to also replace the guest house, but instead of building the Ramada, doing a pergola behind the garage. And this will be a much more open, kind of airy feeling than the Ramada, which had multiple solid walls. They're also proposing to construct some exterior stairs on the north elevation. And this will give them access from the garage directly to their kitchen on the upper floor. The original design study had called for retaining the existing brick that was on the house. However, that brick was disposed of during construction and no longer exists. So, the new wall cladding would be a combination of a stone veneer with horizontal wood siding. Also, the applicant would like to replace the prior-approved slate roof with a standing seam metal roof and then replace the wood doors and windows with steel doors and windows. There are also some minor revisions to the fenestration in response to changes to the floor plan layout and then also some new exterior light fixtures. So, as the chair mentioned, you know, this project is in every overlay district within the city. Staff did go through each of those overlays and did not find any inconsistencies between the project and those overlay districts. Regarding forest character, preliminary site assessment was completed in 2015. There were no trees identified on the property at that time. And the city forester recommended planting two upper and two lower canopy trees. So, staff has carried that condition of approval forward into this project. With respect to privacy and views, I think, yeah. So, next, I'm going to kind of go through each of these items somewhat briefly. But we'll cover privacy and views, parking and access, building and roof form, the right-of-way character, and then circle back with the finished details. So, the 2015 preliminary site assessment identified a potential privacy impact along the north elevation. What you see here at the top of the screen is the approved north elevation from the last design study. It had one door and one very small window. Under the current proposal, due to a shift in the floor planned layout, the applicant is proposing additional fenestration. You will notice that the fenestration is towards the back half of the residence and not the front. And I believe that that is intentional because the neighbor's south-facing window is more towards the front of the project site. I hope that makes sense. We, I did not hear from the north neighbor. I did not, he did not reach out to me with any concerns. I know the applicant did reach out to them, made contact, provided all the information regarding the project and no concerns were expressed. Also, just want to kind of show you on this screen the difference between the Ramada and the pergola. Again, this was previously a guest house at the back of the garage. And you can see how enclosed the Ramada was and how the pergola will kind of open up that area a little bit more. So, with respect to parking and access, the existing condition is a two-car garage in the front setback. The garage is finished with the same brick that was previously on the residence. It has a gable roof. The applicant is proposing to replace the roof and install a flat roof. Because the garage is located in the front setback, it is legal non-conforming. The zoning code currently only allows single-car garages to be in the front setback. So, the existing garage will be retained and just the roof form will be modified. And the exterior will be, the brick will be replaced with a stone veneer that's going to match the house. So, the project meets requirements for parking as well as access. Regarding building and roof form, the applicant was proposing to replace the roof form along the west-facing elevation just to provide a little bit additional interior height on that upper floor. It turns out that the existing condition is a non-conforming plate height of 19 feet. The staff report identified it as 18 feet 6 inches. But the current condition is actually 19 feet. So, as an existing non-conformity, it cannot be increased. So, a special condition has been included in the project. And it's also been revised to reflect that the existing plate height is 19 feet and cannot be increased. With regards to the right-of-way character, there's an existing concrete driveway along San Antonio. Most of the driveway is in the public right-of-way. A very small portion, about 100 square feet, is actually on the property. As was discussed with the last project, the residential design guidelines discourage gray concrete for driveways. It also exceeds the 14-foot width limitation within the right-of-way. So, staff has conditioned the project that the driveway be modified. The applicant did respond and propose a sandset paver driveway that would be carried into the right-of-way. Staff has a little bit of concern about the color and the color sort of imitating the look of gray concrete. But I understand that the manufacturer does offer some other options and that earth tone could be a possibility. And kind of circling around to the finished details of the residence, you know, again, the original design study had anticipated retaining the brick that was on the home at the time. That brick has been disposed of. So, we don't know what their plan was during construction. But the applicant is proposing a wood horizontal siding for the upper floors and a limestone veneer for the lower floor, which will also be applied to the garage. The wheels or the windows are identified as steel in bronze. And again, this is a change from the wood windows that were approved under the previous design study. And the standing seam metal roof, which replaces the previous slate tile. Staff has reviewed all the exterior lighting. It meets all of the requirements for being shielded, down-facing, as well as our lumen level limitations. And then just really quickly regarding site coverage. The site coverage is not changing substantially from what was approved in 2015. There is a little bit of reorganization, but a lot of a lot of these improvements have been constructed and are proposed to be retained. So, this just kind of shows the similarity between the two plans. You can see that there aren't a whole lot of changes. And the project does meet the requirements for site coverage. So, with that, staff is recommending that the commission adopt a revised resolution approving the project. And again, the revision to the resolution is for condition of approval number 33, which indicates that the non-conforming plate height is 18 feet 6 inches, when in fact it is 19 feet. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Bolton, do you have a question for staff?
No, but I do have a hard time remembering to turn off my hand raised button.
No problem. Does any of the commissioners have a question for staff? We don't hear any. All right, thank you, Marnie. Adam Jesselnick is the architect on this project. Also, Adam, would you like to make your presentation?
Yes, please. Thank you, Chair LePage, commissioners. Thank you again for taking the time to review this project tonight. And thank you to Marnie for a really thorough job working together on this and providing the staff report and presentation, especially like seeing those construction photos from back in 2017. So, you know, essentially, I started working with Marnie on this application back before my clients purchased the property last fall. And, you know, the objective primarily being to utilize the work that was done before and the previously-approved design study to sort of reactivate this project and get construction back underway. Knowing that we needed to return to the planning commission for approval, since you reviewed the initial project and we were making changes to materials, we also wanted to just take advantage of this review process to make some improvements, I think, that really benefit the project and are more consistent and in keeping with the architectural style. So, Marnie's done a really nice job of laying those out. I think just to highlight a couple, you know, in terms of the garage, we are kind of lowering the height of the garage and we're making that into, you know, a structure that's going to be more consistent with the architectural style of the house. So, that existing gable just sort of is inconsistent with what's there. The green roof will be certainly a benefit for my clients to be looking out over. But I think that the style and material of the garage will be something that will be a really nice benefit to the neighborhood. In terms of the garage itself, again, as Marnie pointed out, we are reducing quite a bit of enclosed space on the back of that garage. So, while it is non-conforming, we're reducing that non-conformity quite a bit. And again, I think that that sort of lightweight steel pergola structure will be something that, you know, provides more light, you know, more openness to the site. And again, we didn't identify any potential privacy impacts there because we're several feet below the neighbor's property. And there is a rather, you know, rather well-developed landscaping along the north side of the house. So, you know, that question came up in terms of the windows that are being added. Again, with the reorganization of the floor plan, we're really just trying to provide the code-required light and ventilation to all rooms as well as, you know, just natural light wherever we can. So, looking at that, as Marnie identified, those windows are located further back on the house, further east. And again, because of the mature landscaping and the position of the neighbor's house, basically, we didn't identify or observe any potential privacy impacts with those windows. The deck, again, the deck is consistent with the previous approval, but, you know, just from a functionality standpoint, those stairs leading from the deck down to the back of the garage, you know, made a lot of sense. There's already, there was already quite a bit of work done on that portion of the site to create steps because about half of them are just following the existing grade. But that connection from the deck down to the main level was something that, I think, again, benefits the project, has a very minimal impact and meets with all of the design guidelines and requirements. And so, just lastly, in terms of the materials, you know, we are proposing natural materials that I think are really cohesive in terms of the character of the house. You know, natural stone, real limestone veneer, natural wood siding, you know, which will, again, those materials will complement each other. And again, the metal roof, which will be a dark bronze color, which is not really very visible from anywhere as you're walking around the house or driving around the house. But again, it will be, you know, will be a very, very nice-looking metal roof that will be durable and fire-resistant and complement the architecture of the home. So, I think that basically covers it. Again, thank you to Marnie for her work on the staff report. Again, happy to answer any questions that any commissioners may have about this project.
See, Commissioner Bolton has his hand up.
Yes, I do. Thank you. I have questions regarding the tree planting requirements. I don't see, but maybe I'm just not seeing because it's hand-drawn, locations on the proposed landscape site plan for these trees. And I don't know if you have proposed locations identified or if you could provide us with any information regarding that.
So, INCA Landscape provided this preliminary landscape plan. We did discuss the tree planting requirements. And we are happy to meet that condition of approval to plant the additional trees. In the past, we've often found, you know, it useful just to have the forester, again, it's a new forester in the city since this project was started. So, I think it would be helpful to have her input on the tree locations. But certainly, you know, we'd be talking about the south and the east side of the home so as not to, you know, impede views or light in the front yard of the house.
Okay, that's fine. I also identified that the owner of the property is a James Bond villain. And I'm just wondering if we should expect any, you know, underground lairs or potential plans to take over the world based in Carmel. I just want to avoid these things starting in Carmel. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I think the owners have a good sense of humor, so I appreciate you catching that.
Obviously. Thank you.
Not much gets by these planning commissioners, tell you that. Are there any other questions for the applicant, for Adam? Okay, thank you, Adam.
Thank you all.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the planning commission regarding this application? I don't hear anybody. Okay, then I'm going to close the public comments, open it up for the commissioners. Mr. Delz, would you like to start?
Muted.
Mr. Delz, you're muted.
Sorry about that. You know, I've been walking by, I guess we've all been walking by this house for quite a while. And in fact, I'm really glad to see it moving forward. I don't think I have any further questions or concerns that were not addressed by staff at all. So, I would be inclined to approve this. And I noticed that this is for a concept and final. And again, I think I'm okay with that, especially because this did have a previous approval. I guess, but point of order, is that common for us to do both together? I guess, but point of order, is that common for us to do both together? No? Okay. I'm going to let you guys, I think I need to follow on this one a little bit more.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Dowd. Commissioner Locke or Commissioner Lehman, you're unmuted. Why don't you go ahead?
Hi. Well, a couple of things. On a, on a general basis, I'm thrilled that someone is going to do something with this piece of property. Because this is like another piece of this unfinished symphony that includes the other North Point project and the Del Dono. So I'm, I'm thrilled and I, I don't have any objection to doing concept and final at the same time on this one because it is so far along, really. And because it had a previous permit. This is a significant corner because it faces the, the open land and the sea. And, you know, it's, 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 it's a very interesting street because it's only on, residences are only on one side of the street. And it's a well-traveled street. So, but I think, I like what you've done, Adam. I, you know, I like the softness of it. There, I like the wood, the horizontal wood siding. I have no objection to the gray pavers. I, you know, we, we talk about earth tones all the time, but, you know, we're a community that sees, you know, a bit of fog, less than we did 40, 50 years ago. But with global warming, but we, we do get fog and overcast and, and that's a perfect color for Carmel. So I do like the gray pavers, if that was your intention, Adam, for the, for the color. I, so I would consider it sky tones as important as earth tones. And I, I think that's, that's really about it that I have to say. I'm just glad it will go forward. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Commissioner Locke, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I'll just echo what the former commissioners have said. I'm extremely happy to see this move forward. I was not on the commission when it was reviewed previously. I agree with Commissioner Lehman that because of this property actually is right across the street from our Great White Sand Beach. I think the lighter colored pavers are appropriate. And I don't have any problem with that. I think that the condition 33, no increase in plate height, that's important. And yeah, I'm just, I hope it gets done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Bolton, would you like to make some comments?
Sure. I agree with the previous commissioners and I think the staff did an excellent job on this. I don't see the need to change the paper color. I think the gray is fine. I wonder if there's any comment from any of my other commission members about the roof material. I understand standing seam roof are being approved more and more, and I have no objection to the concept. I just want to ensure that this particular roof is as dull as possible, not reflective. And so I might consider adding a condition that would state that the architect worked with staff to ensure that that's the case for a final approval. My other comment is regarding the landscaping, once again. On an important property like this, on a corner that's extremely public, I would prefer to see a landscape plan that includes the proposed trees before I approve something on a final, generally speaking. I understand it's a special concept and final partially because of a previous existing permit. And so I don't necessarily object to this particular project having a concept and final, although I think I would discourage that as a general thing in the absence of an extremely simple project. So I think those are my comments. I support this project. I'm very pleased to have something happening here. I encourage and support the staff's efforts to, you know, make sure that all of our unfinished projects are finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bolton.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Locke.
As Commissioner Bolton just mentioned, with the roof materials and going with the metal roof versus the slate, Adam, what was the, what was the thought process on switching it over?
So I think a part, part of the motivation is, again, we want consistency among, among all the materials that we're proposing for the house. The slate that's there, you know, it's really too dark. It's, it's just not in keeping with, with what we're trying to do with the stone and the wood. I think additionally, in terms of choosing metal, you know, we're really just interested in a maintenance-free, long-lasting material that, you know, we'll only have to worry about once in hopefully our lifetimes. And again, the fire-resistant properties were really important. So, you know, I have done recent, recent projects with metal roofs on corner lots. I know it's a point of concern, especially the reflectivity and the, and the color. So we actually have a sample that was presented at the site. Again, happy to work with staff on that. But again, with the, with the slope of the roof and the position of the house, there, in my, in my view, there would be very little roof that's actually visible from, from the public right-of-way. And so that was part of the motivation as well to just, to choose something that will, that will be consistent, you know, that would be attractive, but again, not really call attention to it in any way.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this project. I think Adam has done a great job. It is, as all the commissioners acknowledge, it's a very prominent location. Had an unfortunate history. Caused a lot of stress for the community because of its prominent location. And I think Adam's done a great job. I really like the fact that he's done a lot to reduce the mass of the garage and provided a green roof. So other than that, let's review the resolution. Get that up here. Okay. Standard conditions of approval. Okay, special conditions. We have the number 29, the tree planting. I think Commissioners Bolton's comments were good, that we need to, we need to see that on the landscape plan in the future. Number 30 is the right-of-way encroachments. Number 31, the concrete driveway. It sounds like all the commissioners, including myself, are okay with the gray pavers. And the concrete driveway is to be removed. I think that's what that primarily, number 31 refers to is removal of the concrete driveway in the right-of-way. Number 32, right-of-way planting. shall submit a planting layout, plant palette for the right-of-way. 33, the west plate, excuse me, the plate height on the west elevation is non-conforming at eight foot six and shall not be increased. But that's been changed because it's actually 19 feet. So it's, it's going to be 19 feet and shall not be increased. So with that, do we have a motion to accept the resolution or with any additional special conditions?
Chair, I'd like to make one quick comment.
Yes.
So I, I would prefer, if I had my way, to have 29 read that the applicant will work with the forester and city planning staff to determine the location of these trees, not just the city forester as staff and city forester may have slightly different concerns regarding the location of these trees. That's it.
Okay, that's a good, good comment.
From staff, could I ask a question of, for clarification on the resolution and the conditions? Did the commission want to add the condition that was suggested by Commissioner Bolton for the architect to work with staff on the roofing material to reduce reflectivity?
Yes.
Well, I was, I was under the impression that the applicant submitted a sample that was approved by staff. So staff had a chance to, to review it, to staff have any objections to it? I didn't, I didn't hear any in the staff's report.
I'll let, I'll let Marty speak to that. I think what I heard maybe perhaps, or Adam can, can speak to this. I thought it was on a different project. They submitted a sample of roofing material, but not necessarily for this one. But Marty, you want to, can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, my, my apologies. I have not reviewed the actual sample. And I'm happy to, to work with the architect in evaluating the finish just to ensure that our standard of mat is carried out.
Okay, in that case, I think we should add a special condition to the motion stating that.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolton, you want to make the motion?
I'll take a stab at it. I move that we approve, myself, gosh, I got to get that stupid number up first. I have the commission, I have the wrong thing open. Hold on. Okay. Okay, I move that we approve DS 20-323 inclusive of the special conditions with the following modifications to those conditions as identified by staff. Modifying number 29 to read that the applicant should work with the forester and city planning staff to determine the installation location of the trees. And additional of special condition number 34, which would be that the applicant work with staff to get approval for the material for the roof. Specifically, the sheen of the metal roof.
And provide a sample.
And provide, yeah, provide a sample to the planning commission, or to the staff, rather, and have the staff approve that material.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a second. Go ahead, go ahead, Adam.
I second it.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion to accept the resolution with standard conditions, special conditions, as per staff with the changes as to number 29, where the, the staff and city forester will be involved in the location of trees. And 34, that the roof material shall be presented to staff for approval to meet our standards. Any more discussion?
No, thanks.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bolton?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Sherlock?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion is carried. Who's speaking? All right, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, somebody was speaking. I didn't know what that was about. Okay, the motion is carried. Good luck with your project. We'll be looking forward to see that completed. All right, that concludes, that concludes the items on the public hearing tonight. The next item on our agenda is the director's report, and we have a new director. So set the bar for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing fancy for the report tonight. I just want to start by saying, you know, thanks to Marnie for the wonderful job she's done over the last year. You know, I'm excited to be here and to work with, work with her. I've had a chance to speak with most of you. And I'll make sure that we have one-on-ones with those that I haven't yet. It's really exciting to be here. For those of you that I spoke to already, I live across the hill in Pacific Grove, so I know how special Carmel is. And I'm looking forward to helping to keep it that way and now into the future. So excited to work with you and our staff. And I'll look forward to a more thorough report in the future when we have some more to report. But for today, I think that's probably enough. So just thank you and looking forward to working with you all.
Okay, thank you, Brandon. I guess that we, we don't have any subcommittee reports, no future agenda items. Although we, like I said before, I think it'd be good to have a, a review of the, our policy, our residential guidelines and how they're affected by climate change regarding, particularly with the forest fire. So I'll, I'll provide the summary report to staff that has been created by the Climate Change Committee. And then we can see about getting it on our agenda sometime. So our next regular meeting is March 10th. So are there any other comments or anything that wants to say?
Michael, can you give us what, copies of whatever you're giving to staff? Because I'd be interested to see what they're doing with the climate change.
Yeah, I can, I can probably have staff forward that to you, or I can forward it to you. I don't want to, you know, just so we don't get into a brown everything.
Right.
Mr. Chair, if you would, send it to staff and we can distribute it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. That's what we should do.
Great.
Very good. Okay, in that case, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you next month. Bye-bye.
Have a good month.
Bye.
Thank you.
You too. Stay well.